We'll move on, conflict of interest. We only have one item on the agenda and I have elected to recuse myself due to being the subject matter of the item.
And I will do so as well.
So what we will do is turn the gavel over to Councilman Brower.
See if I can still remember how to do this. All right, we'll make this lengthy agenda as short as possible here. So as was mentioned, we have the agenda item related to the June 5 general municipal election and some options that we have. And we'll entertain presentation by the city clerk and then if our city attorney has any additional counsel related to that, we will look to him as well. Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you. The elections code provides that if there are no more candidates than there are positions on the council to be filled, the council has some options. And one is to continue with the election process in which case a write-in candidate could come forward. They could cancel the election and appoint those who have been nominated and have been certified to take those seats. In this case, we do have three seats available and we have three candidates that have -- who have qualified. So it would behoove the council to cancel the election and seat the three qualified candidates at their meeting of July 10, which would follow the normal election process. If the election is canceled this evening, then no more nominations may be received, so there would be no write-in candidates. And I have proposed a resolution that provides for the appointment of the offices. And so the appointees would be Rhodes Rigsby, Ovi Dupe-Pesquieu, and John Leonard, the three that have filed and have qualified. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to respond.
I'd like to add one thing. Look at the bottom, it's the financial impact. By not having an election, the city will save approximately $10,000.
And if I may, one other point in your voting. Because we have three council members participating, it does require three affirmative votes to approve the resolution. If it were a vote of two to one, the resolution would not pass.
And you obviously have opportunity to review the resolution of legal counsel. It's acceptable in your eyes if we chose to adopt this resolution?
Yes, this procedure is specifically provided for in the elections code as a cost-saving measure which the city has available to it.
Questions, comments from council members?
We're arguing over here over who should speak first. I must confess, I have, and I may feel differently about this in two years should I decide to run for reelection, but I do have ambivalent feelings about this. When I was inducted into this office, in his retirement speech, Councilman Peterson said that Daley was the highest vote getter and he got, I don't know, somewhere around 20, 25 percent of the votes. And he was a bit distressed about that. In my mind, a democracy that is active and vibrant and robust requires debate. And so I have ambivalent feelings. I mean, we can look at this situation, I guess, in many different ways. Probably the two most obvious is, on the one hand, that this particular city council is functioning so effectively and represents the will of the citizens so effectively that there's simply no reason to appoint or to urge other people to run. I hope that's the case. On the other hand, at the other extreme of the spectrum, I guess, is we could worry that this represents serious apathy in the citizens of Loma Linda regarding the issues that are -- that have confronted us. Everything from development to RDA to McDonald's and all the other issues. And if we're looking at a situation in which apathy is prevailing, that's of significant concern to me. So I choose to -- I choose to believe it's the former, not the latter, but I am concerned. And I guess that should anyone be listening to this broadcast besides the people in the auditorium, I would hope that they feel empowered to come and engage in robust dialogue so that we make the best decisions that we're capable of making. If the citizens of Loma Linda believe that all wisdom lies in this dais, then I'm sorry to disappoint you. We all put our pants on one leg at a time. And I think that I encourage and urge robust debate on any and all issues. And so hence, I've got some apathy, or I'm not apathy, I have ambivalence about what's happened here. I do, I'm an educator, I do a lot of lecturing. And if I go into an amphitheater and I give a lecture and there's no questions, I don't feel like I've done a very good job. And in this case, I feel like we have no questions. And I hope that means that we're doing such an exemplary job that everybody wants to endorse the decisions that we've made. But ultimately, I urge the citizens of Loma Linda, including in two years when Councilman Duper and I run, to engage us in dialogue, to debate the issues, because I think that holds us to a higher standard than we may live up to otherwise. So I support the motion, but I have some ambivalent feelings about it.
Is there an opportunity for public comment on this, or no?
I was planning to ask for comments even though it's not a public care. Obviously, it's more to anyone who wishes to speak, and I will definitely invite that.
Well, before we do that, I must say that this has been a very fun and interesting two years that Councilman Daley and I have been here. And I have developed a lot of respect and admiration for the rest of the council members, including Dr. Brower, who I'm very sad to see leaving. And I think he has given us a lot of experience and stability over the last couple of years.
I think we need to put that up for a vote, actually.
Right?
Because that's a motion I'm not in favor of.
But on the other hand, Dr. Leonard is also a very, very good man. And we, I believe all of us, I may be speaking out of turn, but all of us do support him and would support him in the election process anyway. We do have a unique council where I think we don't always agree, but we do all get along. And I think we all respect each other. And whatever issues that happened in the past, I haven't seen that type of stuff in the last two years. So I'm very proud of what we have, I'd like to see that continue. And in doing that, I know personally where I would have supported if we have this election, and that would be the three people that filed. When we look at the fiscal impact, obviously, for those of you in the public that don't know, we've done a lot of severe cuts in the last month or so, including our city clerk. We've had to restrict our city clerk's hours. And Pam has been here the longest of anybody at the city, and that was a very painful thing to do. We are in, like everybody else, but we're in a very dire financial position and we're trying to maintain our services. So $10,000 is $10,000 that we could save. Just to make it clear for the public, if, and I may be wrong, so help me out Pam, but if there is a write-in during the election, there would actually have to be more write-in of that, more write-in names of that particular one person than, say, any of the three candidates garnered, correct?
That is correct. However, if the election is canceled this evening, if you adopt the resolution, then there would be no opportunity for write-in candidates.
Right. I guess I just want to make the point that if we do this and we hold an election, is it, and I agree with, I agree with my council member here, that there's something about the electoral process that's very important. But if we do counsel it, the chances are so astronomical that anybody else would actually garner enough votes to oust any of the three people that applied. I mean, it just would not happen. So is it foolhardy, is it a waste to hold something when we know the outcome? I don't know. But I agree, I very much agree with you. So it is a hard decision, especially when we don't want to appear like we're circumventing the system in any way. So it's actually very hard for the three of us to sit up here and discuss this, because we know what the outcomes we believe would be, but we want to make sure that everything appears transparent and that we're doing the will of the community. So that's it for my comments at this point, and then I'd like to actually hear from everybody else.
I'll just make a brief comment and then invite any of the public to come forward. I agree with the comments, but...
One of these, I guess our budget cuts, we got, replace these light bulbs here. Thank you. I agree with the comments that both of you have made, I think they're both very wise and very appropriate. You know, I think there probably are some segments of the population that do view things both ways. I think there are some that are very satisfied with the way the council is operating, and this is a sign of that. There's going to be some that probably do have apathy, and there's probably some truth to both of those viewpoints. But you can't change what any individual has chosen to do or not do, i.e., there has been no one, except for the three individuals, that chose to file. And that is a fact, no matter what the reason for that is, that is a fact. And there is a fact of significant cost-saving in some very challenging times. But as the city clerk does mention, it's a little bit of a worrisome trend, as she pointed out, in 1970, in the initial election for city council, we had the most candidates, 15. And whereas now, I believe this is the first time, we've only had three for three. So, you know, it's a trend that you could argue is it good or bad, but I do think a little more vigorous participation is generally a good thing. But on the other hand, who's filed and the numbers that have filed speak for themselves. And I do think it would be very difficult for a write-in candidate to overcome that. So just a few of those brief thoughts, and now I'd like to open up the discussion to anyone in the audience. Please come forward, encourage you to keep your comments to about three minutes. And you don't have to give your address, you can give it to the city clerk if you choose not to give it publicly, if you choose to, by microphone, that's your choice as well. Dick?
Thank you, Dick Wiley, here in Loma Linda. I agree with what you're coming up with. We don't have enough people that have put in names. The thing that troubles me more than that is when you look at the election on a few of these issues in this town, we've had less than 50 percent, sometimes far less than that, come out to vote. And you look at the past records, numbers of people that are voting are less and less. Someday, we're going to have two people running this town, just because of two votes. The others say, "I'm not going to vote. I like the ones that are there, I hate the ones that are there," or whatever. Two people in an election that would take the time to vote could run this town. This gets frightening to me. This is not only in Loma Linda, this is across the country. And I think the problem is basically, politics is too much inner fighting. We haven't had it on this council, we had it at the end of the last council. And I think that soured a lot of people on either side that may not come here. You see me down here all the time at the council meetings. And really, I'm sort of appalled that people don't come down and find out what's going on, and tell it's something I don't want. Then I'll come up here and I'll bang this place. I'll bang this thing and I'll say, "My piece." Do I come back? No, they don't come back. So these are the people that, you know, we want the town to be represented and to be aware of what's going on. I didn't know there was any election type of thing until I read it in the city news last week. Says Dusty and Ovi aren't running. And I'm thinking, "What?" Then I see Dusty out here as he was leaving. And he says, "Well, I guess we only have three candidates running." And I said, "When's the deadline?" He says, "About two minutes." Well, I'm not knocking the council for this, but I didn't see anything on the agendas announcing anything that, you know, it was open for people to file. And that's just, you know, general comment, because I don't get the paper all the time. If it was in there as an article that this was open up, that's one thing. But as I say, the thing that's most disturbing is that with fewer and fewer people voting, things are very much easier to slip right through the door, because you've got your little group in here that says, "Oh, we got these votes, we're behind this, and in it comes. What do the rest of them say? Now, the other side of the coin? If you don't come out and vote, zip the lip. You have no right to complain. If you don't take the time to vote, yes, there are some situations. Somebody gets stuck at work and can't get out in time to vote. Well, you had the morning. I didn't want to get up. Well, that's your problem, that's not the others." But there are very few circumstances where this doesn't pertain. And this is, as I say, this election, not only city, and I mean, the city will be over with, but the state, the county, and the federal will be very interesting to see what the numbers turn out and why. And this is where, as I say, you've done a good term so far with the ones that's were here. Stan has been on quite a while, and, you know, I hate to see him go. He's like Pam. Pam's the mother of Loma Linda. She's the history of this town. She, oh, I shouldn't say the history of the town, she knows the history of this town. And since Floyd Peterson left, Stan Bauer knows the history of this town. And, you know, you guys are coming on fairly new, but you've had some background in it. You know what's going on. But what's here, I don't know how many people watch this at home, but what I see out here in the audience that show up, you know, I'm sad for this town, because they don't know what's going on.
If I could respond to that, I want to support what Councilman Duper said. I don't want to be misinterpreted. I have very good working relationships and support the two councilmen that aren't in the room right now. I'm talking about a process issue. And I think that's what you're addressing as well. And I hope that whether there's contested elections or not is probably a secondary issue, important, but a secondary issue. But I want there to be open, robust debate on the important issues in the city. And that's what concerns me. And I think that if there's that robust debate, then probably there's going to be contested elections. In the case of a, you mentioned state and national elections. I mean, we all have our own biases regarding politics. But if we take the current President, Obama, who took a pretty messy economy and he's not, he doesn't, he hasn't earned an A, but he's certainly done, he's put a lot of effort into his work. But if he was running unopposed, I would be concerned about the status of our democracy at that point. And we're on a much, much, much smaller scale here, but I still think it warrants a debate, and that's what we're having now. Having said that, I still wish that Councilman Brower, who's kind of the senior statesman of this whole operation, would continue. But he didn't ask my opinion, so...
I would say that this is actually a pretty good turnout as of late, and it's not even a normal council meeting, which is, which is actually sad to say that. But we always, it's almost like we enter the, come through the door and we're always hoping to see people out in the audience, because we actually enjoy that. It makes it feel worthwhile, and we don't always get that, so I'm actually happy to see people here today. One other comment is that I got to pitch a little bit for the council that's here, including Dr. Brower. What's very unique, and we interact with a lot of other cities, I go to functions and I meet other council members and I meet statesmen, and, you know, whether it be state level, federal level, and I would say pretty emphatically that I don't think there's any of us on here that want to be politicians. And that's pretty rare. In a lot of cities, there are a lot of people on council, in council seats that are using those positions as stepping stones. And I will tell you, what you get here is a representation of the city of Loma Linda. And then I don't think there's anyone here with any other higher ambitions, at least not at this point. And that's neat, and that's unique. And so, anyway, just a plug for what we've got going on, but...
Unless Councilman Brower cites higher...
And maybe we haven't heard about the run for Congress. Is this the first?
You haven't heard and you won't hear.
And I think too, just to add a little more to what you're saying, that what the people generally don't see is they say, "Oh, they're just down here Tuesday nights for city council meetings." If they happen to watch or happen to be here, when all the different committees and commissions and stuff that you divvy up amongst yourselves as to who's going to be representative of this city to these different commissions and things, people don't realize, because they don't see, you're not here. You may be over at Norton, IVDA meeting or something. And they don't see that. But there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't see until you come down and become somewhat involved. And, you know, it's like the trails. People complain about it. Do we see them at the trails committee meetings? Very seldom. But they're willing to jump on something, but they're not willing to come up and sit down and see something. There are a few, but this is why I say, it's, to me, it's, as big as this town is, we don't see a lot of people coming out to learn. This is an education process. And I've learned a lot coming down here. And people will say things, and I'll say, "Wait a minute. Do you know the whole picture? Oh, yeah." I say, "But that's not true." And again, they only took this little snippet out here, and this is the picture. This is why, this is a big process. All Texas is a big process. And I urge anybody to come to these meetings, to learn, to listen, to understand, and become somewhat involved in your town. Know what's going on. So I thank you for the time and thank you for the work.
Thank you for your comments. I do think, one comment I would like to expand on just very briefly, it is concerning if there is a perception that, you know, things aren't publicized enough as far as elections. I don't think there's certainly any intent or any reason to believe that's true, but perceptions are important, and maybe we could do a better job to advertise when things are, can always look back and identify some issues like that. But I am confident that the type of individuals that do choose to run for city council are very much aware of some of those dates. But I think you're pointing out that as a potential problem is worth bearing in mind as we go forward. Fred?
My name is Fred Ramos. I live in historical Bryn Mawr. And Stan, I hate to see you go. You've all, you've been here almost as long as I have. I've been here since 1939. I came here as a five-year-old.
Not even, not even close, you're a real veteran.
So I've been here and I've seen the changes. I'm not as educated as you people, but I do lead the people of Bryn Mawr. I am a chairman of a committee of four. And I also pass out food for the needy in the community, which I did yesterday. I get to go, I mean, I travel the whole county in this food program, and I listen to things that occur, especially when it comes to the city where I live, here in Loma Linda. And it's not favorable. It's not very favorable. The president's ratings are low, the congress is even lower in Washington. And I believe that this council is lower than that. I hate to say it, but I come in contact with people. You probably come in contact with professional people. I come in contact with the people that are in need. They're the ones that are the voice that is happening right now. Pam, hate to see you go. I told you before in private, I'm doing here in public, I hate to see you go. And I appreciate everything that you've done. Well, I don't know how much money we lost in RDA, how the city, can somebody give me a coat? How much money did the city lose when RDA went back?
We had to reduce our budget by about a million dollars this year.
How much money are we going to lose in this election if we don't have it? I mean, how much are we going to gain?
State, $10,000.
$10,000. What is $10,000 compared to the millions that we lost? And the voice of the people are not coming out and voicing their opinion as to how they feel. I'm telling you, because I'm out there, I see it, I come in contact with people, I talk to them just like I'm talking to you, and you, and you. They tell me what's going on in the city. If it wasn't for Mr. Wiley here, I would never have known about this thing. So it wasn't really brought out to the public. I don't think a lot of people knew that this was happening tonight. I don't want to downgrade you, I know you've done a lot of things, the McDonald's things, if it would have gone the other way, you would have turned McDonald's... If I was McDonald's, a runner at McDonald's, I would have taken the McDonald's house out of here and taken it to Redlands and San Bernardino and somebody else. I would have taken it somewhere else. But I'm glad that you decided to, even though the food that is eaten here, which is very good, very good. I eat a lot of vegetables and all that, I try to stay away from meat as much as possible, but I still, still have a choice to want, to do whatever I want to do, as far as food is concerned. I haven't attended some of the meetings here at the council. I used to attend quite a bit. I had the last council put in the park, the Bryn Mawr Park. I had the last council put in the streets, the curbs, the lights. Before, people used to be afraid to go to Bryn Mawr. It had a reputation, even to this day. If there's a disturbance down there, they sent the whole, the whole San Bernardino squad down there because of the reputation it had. But now people are dying, that used to live here in the past, back in the, before the 1900s, 20s and 30s and 40s, and now they live in San Bernardino, Colton. And I met a man when I was coming from Sacramento in Bolestal. And he asked me, "Where are you from?" And I said, "Well, you probably don't know..." And I said, "Well, you probably don't know. I live in a town, a little town in San Bernardino, near San Bernardino." "What is the name of the town?" He says, "Well, you probably have never heard it." He says, I told him, I says, "Bryn Mawr." "Oh, Yonso." And I says, "How do you know about Yonso?" He says, "I was born there. I was born in Yonso." And the reason they call it Yonso even to this day is because at one time it was called Redlands Junction. And people couldn't say, they couldn't speak, they weren't fluent in English, so they couldn't say Redlands Junction, so they decided to use the word Yonso as junction. And I've met a lot of people, because of what has happened in the Bryn Mawr area, the improvements and all that, now they're proud to say that they were born or they lived here. And to my dying day, I will always say historical Bryn Mawr because we've been there since 1863. It has changed its names, but we've been there. Our people came from Mexico, working on the rails. I know I've taken more than my three minutes, but I'm also a commissioner with a historical commission, which I wasn't supposed to be on, but because I gave a lecture here one day, they decided to elect me to be part of the commission. So, some of the people that have written books, people that have tours about $75 of taking you to the different areas, and I can rebuttal 80% of what they say because I lived it and my family lived it. Today, it's a historical day for you people. You lost millions of dollars in RDA. $10,000 is nothing compared to what you lost because of what is going to occur regarding the decision that you are going to make today. If anybody wants to say anything, this is a time for you to rebuttal mine.
I appreciate your comments. I mean, you, you speak with passion and experience, and I respect that. Let me ask you a question. You talk about how the confidence level of politicians in the city council in particular are at a low level. What do you, what recommendations would you have for us in terms of how to connect with people that believe that we don't represent them effectively?
Well, you should publicize, instead of having one small little, three, four, five, six sentence, whatever, put a paragraph and explain exactly like Wiley says. Explain the whole picture of it as to what the decision was made.
Now, you're talking about advertising the opportunity to run.
Advertising regardless where. It doesn't matter where, whether it's on TV or whether, which you do have. Also, meetings at the council meetings, how important it is for the people to show and come and see as to what is occurring, getting the whole picture and not half a picture. I made, I made a buy one day that came out in 60 minutes, and they had the whole world in uproar, but they didn't talk to the right people. Now, they asked me, they asked me, "Oh, you must have been the guy that bought the thing." And I tell them, "Yes." And after I explained to them exactly what the situation was, it was either buying an item that cost just a few thousand dollars compared to buying an item that costs millions of dollars, to save an item that costs millions of dollars. So, like I said, put it out there. Give us the whole picture. Don't give us half a picture. But pets, you said this, but pets, you said that. That's all you read.
Mr. Ramos, can I ask you a question? Mr. Ramos, can I ask you a question?
I'm here to answer any question that you want.
Do you believe that we on the council are the ones that put out that information?
No, it goes from here to the media. And the media's the one that puts it out.
As far as notices and, and things like that?
Some of the notices and some of the people that watch it on TV, and some of those people are the ones that I talk to. Like I said, I talk to the commenter. I don't talk to you educated people because educated people have different pictures.
But I hope we can avoid the differentiation between the haves and the have-nots, so to speak. I mean, I'm here to represent the citizens of Loma Linda, and I know Councilman Duper and, and all of the other councilmen feel the same way. But I can only speak for myself. I'm not here to speak for the people that earn $100,000 a year or more. I'm, I'm here to speak for the citizens of Loma Linda and to figure out what's in the best interest of, of the citizen, for our city in the future. And I think we all feel that way. And we may be a little clumsy and awkward and not always effective in achieving that, but I want to assure you that that's certainly our pursuit. And so, if you have a stronger connection to people that you feel are not being effectively represented, then I would urge you to get in touch with some of us.
Well, whether you make $1,000 or you personally make a million dollars, it doesn't matter how much money you make. The seat that you hold represents the city itself at a whole.
I think we all agree. I agree.
And so, you really have the power as though you have $100 million in your pocket. You hold that much, you hold that much power as you have, if you have $100 million in your pocket, it belonged to you. You have that much power. Even though the city's probably 12,500 people, you have a lot of power.
So, what would you change in the process? What can we?
I told you before, hey, you got to, you got to express to the public the whole picture of the whole, of the, whatever is occurring, not just one little sentence. Try to get the media, you can tell the media. You have the power to tell the media that, hey, not enough is being brought out into the public, only a small picture is coming out. I haven't showed up because of what I've heard, the small little parts that I hear. If it wasn't for Mr. Wiley here that attends all the meetings, and he communicates with me, he tells me what, what is occurring.
Mr. Ramos, and I had some concerns from what you said, and I, I know you know our, our city clerk very well, and you think very highly of her, correct?
Very, very high, as far as you can see.
And I, I do also. She is probably the most experienced city clerk in this whole area, this whole region. She knows the law. She constantly keeps us appraised and aware of what, what the law is and what she has to do. But, and I'm going to let her explain a little bit because she's the one that puts out the notices and the filings, and I'm very confident that she does everything above and beyond what she's supposed to do. So, sir, I, I'm a little worried that from some of your comments, it actually felt like you were saying negative things about our clerk, and, and I got to tell you, she does everything in the world, okay?
I'm not talking about her.
That's why I asked you, I'm not sure what you.
No, I'm not talking about her.
Okay. What, what is it?
I would go as far as getting in front of a car for her because of what I feel about her, but don't talk that way about her.
Okay, I'm not, sir, but you're, you're, you're saying that we aren't giving proper notice and that things aren't being put out. So, that is the clerk's job, and I, I think she does a great job at that. So, if there's a specific.
I'm awfully sorry if I came across that way, but I'm just trying to tell you that your ratings were not very high out there in public.
Okay. Okay. So, is that, do we answer the question?
I'm not as educated as you people. I don't have the degrees and all that that you people have.
I just want to make sure we answered your question, sir, and I wanted to make sure we addressed what, what the issue was.
Well, you still left me as though I was stepping on her.
Okay.
That's how I felt.
Madam clerk?
And that's how I feel. And as I leave this chamber, I will still feel the same way.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. You have been tireless for your efforts in Bryn Mawr. Over the years, there's been no community that's had more tireless and effective representation than Mr. Ramos has provided for his neighborhood of Bryn Mawr. And even though we haven't been able to achieve all the things that I think ideally we would like to, certainly, there's been a lot of efforts made to improve services from utilities, from roads, from landscaping of the area to parks in that area since the city of Loma Linda took over the unincorporated area of Bryn Mawr from the county. But there are always ways that I know we could do better, but we've at least attempted to do our best to improve your community, and your efforts to keep the needs before us are much appreciated by everyone. Comments from the audience? Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, even though it's not a formal public hearing, I think we'll move on from public comments then to our item before us. I think all of us as council members have made some general comments related to this. It is now appropriate for any additional comments, or if council chooses to take action. We do have a council bill, 2002-11, with a resolution before us that is an option to approve, to not approve, or potentially do something else and look to council to initiate actions or make further comments.
Based on the fact that we followed all protocol, I support Council Bill R-2012-11, and we'd move it.
I have an action to move that council bill. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further comments or questions from council members? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes 3-0. We will invite our two recused council members back for remainder of the meeting.
Can I, can I make one more comment? Again, I think this was a hard decision for us to make, and I don't think any of us, it was just a hard decision to make, but I think it was the most appropriate thing, and I think we all felt that way, so.
I was trying to research what the approval rating was for Congress, but I think it's about 9%. So, yeah, that's sobriety. Okay. Councilman Popescu had to leave. So, next is reports of councilmen. Any comments? Any reports of officers? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you all.